Here, Dr. Hartsfield. And Ms. Robinson.
Here, if there's no objection, I'd like to approve the absence of Board Member Manser.
No.
We'll see, I'm sorry, there you go. We'll see. Alright, okay, great. Her, um, Board Member, we'll see's, um, absence is approved. Um, and now, um, if there's not any objection, I'd like to have approval of the agenda. If there's no objection, the agenda is approved. Thank you. Okay, we have ten persons that are here to, um, address the board this evening. Our public comments are three minutes per speaker. Um, we do have a full agenda for those, um, who want to speak, so we will cut you off at the three-minute mark. We thank you for being here on today. We will first hear from Crystal Williams to discuss the Lincoln Expansion. Welcome. She's not here. Um, our next speaker is Jose Argon, comments from the SEIU. Our next speaker is Danielle Dispenza, the impact of the expansion of Lincoln Middle School. Welcome.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Danielle Dispenza, and my husband and I have a kindergartner and a second grader at Hale Cook Elementary School. I'm currently serving my second year as Vice President of our PTA. I'm a volunteer teacher helper, reading buddy, our school ambassador for Show Me KC Schools, and I've signed up to be a mentor at Central Middle School this year as well. I've worked as hard as I can to try and understand the Kansas City Public School System and advocate accordingly in our time here with you. With that said, I attended both of the Lincoln Prep Expansion meetings this summer, and I enjoyed hearing about the school from current parents, and my heart ached right alongside them as they described the overcrowded classrooms, teacher turnover, and the logistics of a middle school and high school in the same building. However, I was shocked to learn that administration is trying to ensure enrollment with a proposed expansion, and students who have matriculated within the KCPS school system do not have first priority enrollment over those applying from charter, private, and parochial schools. If the district cannot fill this school that only serves the best of our best, then we're not doing our job to properly serve the students currently enrolled in all of our other schools. I find it difficult to support the expansion of the school that only serves students who can test in. How am I to know that my own children will test high enough to attend this? And if they don't, what message am I sending them? Is it too much to ask that middle school and high schools serve all IB students alongside special education and everyone in between? Or do we continue with a system that is inconsistent and confusing but allows us to try to compete with charter schools because we offer rigor and foreign language immersion? I've read the new five-year strategic plan, and I love everything that it has to say, but again, I find it difficult to support the expansion while the two-hundred-and-ninety students at our elementary school right now still do not have a full-time counselor, they still do not have a reading or academic interventionalist, they do not have a student support interventionalist, they do not have a school social worker. We have students on IEPs, and we do not have one special education paraprofessional in our building assisting these students in their classrooms. As an advocate of inclusion and special education, I find this so discouraging. Not only are we not properly serving all of our students right now, we're certainly not preparing them to apply and to test into a school and succeed at an IB level. Lastly, I find it difficult to support this expansion with Central Middle School's enrollment being low. I spoke out to other parents during the South Middle School discussions that we've had at Hale Cook to say that I wasn't sure that it was the right thing to ask for. Enrollment numbers and density don't seem to support it at this time. And in the meantime, Hale Cook families are still switching schools. We still have parents of special education students who are moving across state line, and we still have other parents who are taking that first-grade option to go to Academy Lafayette, or they're actually even leaving us to go to our own foreign language academy here in the district, and I don't know why. Why are they doing that? Are they doing that because they're that vested in foreign language immersion? Or are they doing it because they know it's a guarantee that their kid is set until eighth grade? Where would you tell me to send my kid right now? Either one of them. What if one of them tests in and the other one doesn't? Who should I be reaching out to to guide me in all of these numerous options in this district alone?
Thank you, Ms. Dispenza. Next, we have Carmen Foster to talk about Lincoln Middle School. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I'm Carmen Foster, SAC Chair for Lincoln College Prep. The push to open Lincoln Middle is not for us, but for the children of the district who are gifted beyond what a regular middle school can offer them. The rigor of classes that prepares them for high school is like no other in our district. The conversation of do we have the numbers to fill it is nonsense. If they build it, we will come, due to the fact that seven of the eighteen elementary schools in the district are less than ten minutes away from Lincoln Middle. Along with all the growth in the urban core of lawyers, doctors, engineers, makes this a no-brainer to reopen Lincoln Junior High School, which was its birth name. Parents want to be able to have a school in their area of living that will meet their standard of education, which the Lincoln curriculum has proven time and time again as national ribbon winners, that they have mastered a curriculum that produces scholars on a mission to greatness. This also enables Lincoln to secure the rich history and stability of the castle that sits on the hill as those middle school students cross over to high school at Lincoln College Prep. In order to achieve this master plan, Lincoln Middle would be the institution to get this started. An IB plan is already in place to start at middle school level. This would give these students the edge they need along with the numbers the district needs to maintain federal and state funding based on the test scores that would be obtained by the strategic planning. As I close my push for opening of the middle school, I want everyone in this room to stop and think about what we are obligated to do for our best and brightest scholars. Will this be for everyone? No, but what in life is? We need to learn to make the strong stronger and the weak better, not to double down to make it convenient, but to pull out all the stops to make it great, because this is about our future, which is our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Riley, Lincoln Expansion. Ken Bakas, Lincoln Expansion. You have three minutes. Welcome.
I will read from my prepared remarks and provide them to you at the end. Good evening, Madam Chair, Honorable Members of the School Board, Dr. Bedell, staff, and ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kenneth Bakas, and I'm a resident of this district and come here tonight as Chairman of the Urban Summit Board of Directors. The Urban Summit is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) corporation that provides advocacy in areas of education, housing, crime reentry, voter education, economic development, health, mental health, and young professionals. We have a major emphasis on education, and I come tonight to express the Urban Summit's support of expanding high achievement opportunities at Lincoln Middle School. We believe there are significant numbers of scholars within the district to support the academic rigor established over the years at Lincoln College Preparatory Academy. This level of education begins at home and is taught and developed in elementary schools. In the middle schools, scholars are further developed and ready for the challenges of a higher academic rigor in high schools. You have heard from KCPS patrons, organizations, piano alumni who support opening this school. You also know of their desire not to lose higher standards. You know of the many students matriculating through institutions of higher learning all across our country who are making major strides in advancing their careers in education, STEM areas, the arts, uh, the arts and civil service. We're pleased to have prepared them for success right here at KCPS. They come back to Kansas City as professional engineers, business owners, lawyers, doctors, dentists, pharmacists, law enforcement, and educators, to name a few. We believe the KCPS is capable of building upon its assets of high-performance schools while simultaneously addressing its lower-performance schools. It isn't a question of either or, it is both. Attention should be directed at strategically invested in all schools and growing your flagship college preparatory schools to further advance opportunities for the next generation to fill the top-level career jobs throughout the industry. All schools should academically prepare students for college, a vocation at school, or a career. Like all of you on the board, we are voluntarily working to ensure a brighter future for all students in Kansas City, and we continue to encourage others to volunteer in a school or mentor a student. A well-educated, trained, and available workforce prepares this community into the future as it attracts high-tech companies to our city. I will continue to provide any assistance to this district I'm asked to do, and we thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you. Melba Kearls, Lincoln Expansion. Welcome.
Good evening. As was said, my name is Melba Kearls. I come as a former state representative, a former city councilperson, and presently an avid Kansas City, Missouri School District supporter. Uh, I've been told that, uh, that Lincoln Middle may reopen if it all goes well, and I would like to lend my support to the initiative. Uh, I think we have enough population to, uh, to sustain Lincoln Middle once it opens. So, I don't have a lot to say. I agree with what everybody else said, and I hope we'll be able to move forward on this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Artie Bland, Lincoln Expansion. Welcome, you have three minutes.
I want to start out by saying thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. And I want to say this, the Castle on the Hill means a whole lot more to me probably than most in that from nineteen eighty-two to nineteen eighty-eight, I went to both the Junior Building as well. At that time, it was Lincoln Academy, and we called it the Junior Building. And the significant thing about that particular experience was that, and I want to basically point out two things. Number one, a history of hope, and I'll say this about the Junior Building. I felt like it was a place that prepared me to be able to go to the next level, which was Lincoln, which was one of the top high schools probably in the country even at that time. But I want to say this, one of the things that came from that experiences was that it challenged each and every one of us to go forward, to be prepared, to be able to handle the things that we would come across at the Senior Building at that time of Lincoln Academy. Subsequently, while I was there, it became Lincoln College Prep. But I want to say this, in terms of that, the whole attitude and concept of the teachers there were that we were being prepared to go to Lincoln Senior. And I think something that's probably been lost over the time is that there was an old gifted and talented program. We don't even talk about that anymore, but I was a member of that gifted and talented program. Some of you may know me now as Judge Bland, but I'm not here in an official capacity, but I'm only here to let you know that that particular experience was one of the things that shaped me and prepared me to later be able to go on to Lincoln Senior and then matriculate there through law school and then serving this community. That was a big part of what we learned and we did there at the Junior Building. And then the other thing that I want to use my career on this, because I think it's so important. For a period of time, I served as the judge for the truancy court. One thing that I'll say about Lincoln Junior and Lincoln Senior is that it cultivated a culture of excellence. It didn't just start once you got to Lincoln High, but it was something that started at the Junior Building, and it continued on. A lot of the building blocks that we got at that time were so important because even at one time, and this is probably forgotten, the senior, the students that were at the Senior Building were also attending classes at the Junior Building, and it was just like a college campus. We would have, uh, individuals from the Junior Building attend classes over in the Senior Building. And so the whole culture was preparing each and every student, no matter where they were, for college. And I think at the end of the day, given what I've seen with truancy in this city, it's important that we cultivate excellence, and this is the first start, is by keeping the school open, or reopening it rather, so that those students can have a shot at a better life. Thank you.
Thank you. Helen Ragsdale to discuss Lincoln Expansion. Welcome, Ms. Ragsdale.
Good evening. And I too would like to thank you for this opportunity. Uh, to the President of the Board and the illustrious Board members. It would be my, um... I had to follow Artie. Artie was one of my students. And he was really a super... Well, I don't even have to tell you that. I am very proud of Lincoln. I am a former teacher of Lincoln High School. I am a graduate of Lincoln High School, nineteen forty-nine. Proud class then, proud classes now. It produces young citizens and productive citizens for this community in which we need. I will not go over all the things that Artie talked about, because those are some of the things I wanted to share with you, the expansion of the middle school to the high school. But I do have, um, some successful and academic components that were essential for us during the years at Lincoln High School and Lincoln Academy and Lincoln College Preparatory Academy, because the culture of Lincoln was so great and so needed. Number one, I'd like to share with you the emotional intelligence, and that is the capacity of our students to promote self-awareness, self-management, and manage relationship, which reinforces the students, the parents, and the teachers. Those are essential programs that our parents and our students need. Number two, we wanted to have an extended, we would love to have, and we did have, and we would like to continue that, extended written comprehensive responses and development in our middle school so that they can be competitive and interactive with other students throughout the other schools in the district, just as Mr. Bland had said. The academic competition content should include math, language art, debate, economics, and social sciences. Number three, parent parental involvement is supported and maintained. Students understand when their parents are involved, it is an academic lesson for them as well. And communication with the teachers was always very essential. Number four, continue testing as you have now, but more strenuous than ever. Monitoring students, understanding an academic lesson, and communicating with the teachers. Well-developed teacher assessments as you have would like to be continued at the middle school as well as the high school.
Thank you, Ms. Ragsdale.
Okay.
Next, we have... Thank you. Next, we have, um, Mr. Clinton Adams, Lincoln Expansion.
I want to, uh, I'm not as sanguine as the other speakers have about this old expansion. They, uh, I think we all agree that expanding a program and providing more seats for people to matriculate in Lincoln would be a good thing. But my concern about is what, at what cost are you going to expand? Uh, two, and two things I'm concerned about. If it's going to cause any diversion of resources that would go to other schools or other students, that would be an issue of concern. And secondly, but more importantly, if you're talking about changing admission standards. The previous speakers didn't address that, and it's my understanding that this expansion comes with the costs, with the change in admission standards at the, at the program. So I want to make two points. One, Lincoln is one school, not two. Artie touched on that, Judge Bland touched on that, so I'm glad that somebody finally touched on that, because everybody's been talking about it like it's, like it's two schools. It's one school, one six-to-twelve school. Historically, it was in one building initially, uh, eighty-six, and then it went down to, uh, two buildings. Uh, then it went back to one building when Covington, uh, came to, uh, when Covington was the superintendent. And I say, uh, "A misguided and ill-informed, ill-advised Superintendent Dr. Covington consolidated the program into, uh, one site." Uh, we in the community argued against it, but the board foolishly deferred to the superintendent. Now, I don't believe Dr. Bedell's intentions are nefarious or intentionally destructive, but they are misguided to the extent that he proposes to alter the admission standards and admitting students on probation. I believe for the most part, the board should support the superintendents when they come in with initiatives and the day-to-day administration of the schools, but you should not defer or, uh, on major policy decisions like the admission standards at Lincoln. Superintendents come and go, but communities endure. Covington consolidated programs, he closed schools, reconfigured grades at the elementary and middle school level, and abruptly left town. We're still suffering from that. So don't exacerbate the problem by converting Lincoln into, uh, and from, from one six-to-twelve school into two schools. It has been successful as one six-to-twelve program in both, and it was successful when it was in one building. It was successful when it's in two buildings. It's successful again now when it's in one building. If you can admit more students with a sixty-sixty, uh, who meets the sixty-sixty standards, move back into two buildings. Uh, the board that approved the consolidation made that commitment. If y'all remember, some of y'all around me remember, the board made that commitment that if there were, uh, if there was a demand for more seats, that they would open the building back up, and that's one reason why the building was not sold. Uh, our committee, this is a blended committee of the Urban League of Greater Kansas City, the NAACP, uh, retired school teachers and administrators, uh, the Urban Summit, and the Committee to Abolish Poverty Incorporated. We support expansion, but we supposedly strongly oppose any alteration to the admission requirements, including admitting students on probation.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Okay, alright.
We would like to thank all of our public for coming and, um, giving your comments. Uh, now for our Board of Directors' report for the presentation of this evening's revenue and expenditure report. The Chair recognizes Board Treasurer Matthew Oats.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, this is our board, um, the district's, excuse me, monthly financial report as of September thirtieth. Um, so that would put us now three months into this fiscal year. So, at, looking at the first slide, revenue's on top, expenditure's on bottom this year. Um, our total revenue so far is at seven-point-two million dollars this year, and that's compared to, um, eleven-and-a-half million dollars last year. So, uh, taking a look at a couple of the, the, the big differences. Number one, if you look at our local revenue, there's about a three-million-dollar difference there, and that's just due to the sale of the Westport Building from the previous year and local grants, local grants, excuse me, um, and the fund balance that carried over from the previous year. Also, if you look here at our state aid section, we have a little bit of a difference, about half a million there, and that's just due to basic state aid decreases due to the weighted average daily attendance of charter schools. So, in our expenditure section, um, hopping down here to the bottom, uh, this year we've spent, uh, thirty-five million, uh, two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars this year compared to about three-point, thirty-one-point-four last year. So that represents about a four-million-dollar difference. And if you look, um, a lot of that, that extra money, most of it actually was spent here under our instruction aside, and that's due to increases in our salaries and fringe benefits, and also our summer, uh, school contractual services that were, had an increase due to, um, attendance. So, if you look here at our revenue over expenditures, we are, uh, about twenty-seven million over, uh, or excuse me, twenty-seven million under, for this year compared to nineteen-point-nine million last year. And just a reminder, like, um, this is a very big reason about why we keep a healthy fund balance um, so that we are able to, um, operate, you know, while we're waiting for your property tax funds and, um, your dispersments from your local revenue sources. So, uh, next page is our, uh, where the money comes from page. So again, always highlighting that local revenue is, uh, the largest, uh, piece of the pie there, representing about seventy-eight percent. And on the next slide, um, it's where the money goes. And so as we talked about this year, we boosted our spending, um, that's instruction-related. So, uh, that represents, as always, a good piece of where we're spending our money and what we do. So finally, our revenue and expenditures graph. So, our red line is our expenditures. Our blue line is, um, our revenue. Once again, highlighting the point that, that gap right there that represents, excuse me, about thirty million dollars, or twenty-seven million dollars, excuse me, is about the same as, uh, previous years, and it's what we always see historically. Um, pretty much after the new year, you'll start to see that blue line cross over the red line, and then from there, we're operating in the blue or the, or the black for the rest of the year. So at that, that will conclude the report for this month, and if there's any questions, we'd be happy to take them.
Thank you, Mr. Oats, for your presentation. Do we have any ad hoc committees? Um, I believe that Board Member Manser, she's here, will, uh, give us an update and talk about our South Zone Plan, our committee.
Okay, thank you. So, um, as my colleagues are well aware, there is a South Zone Schools Committee of the Board. It is a four-member board, um, and I'm joined on that committee by, um, my colleagues John Fiero, Natalie Lewis, and Matt Oats. Uh, we have met, um, to date, four times. We, um, post those meetings, they are public meetings. And the focus of our discussion, as we have looked at, um, what are the educational needs in the south of Brush Creek area? So in the South Zone of the school district, we focus first on identifying, sort of setting the stage for a set of guiding principles, things that we believe, uh, that we would like our board colleagues to consider in the next few weeks. That would be statements that would help the administration and provide direction to the administration as they look at potential educational needs and future educational partnerships. So, we are developing a set of guiding principles. In addition, we have talked about, um, there, the administration came to the board earlier this summer and asked the full board for, um, the allowance to go forward and explore partnerships. And so came to understand that, uh, one of the things that we needed was, uh, a sort of framework or rubric that would help define partnership might look like in this district, and that there is a long continuum of opportunity within partnership. And so that's, um, a document we're working on together with administration. So, the, so, these are a couple of our initial priorities. Um, we are also revisiting the work of the South Zone Schools Committee, and we know that the administration is going to, is taking action on many of the requests and findings that came out of the work of the South Zone Schools Committee. So we are reviewing that data, determining what other information is needed, and then we will be back to report to the board.
Awesome. Is there, um, an update from our, um, governmental relations committee?
Sure, just to mention that we are working on organizing a legislative breakfast to outline our twenty-eighteen priorities, so we'll, uh, keep the board up to date as we get closer.
And finally, I would like to give, um, for the benefit of my colleagues and to the public, um, our policy committee, um, has also met once, and on that committee is, uh, Board Member Manser, Board Member Oats, and myself. And, uh, we're looking at a complete policy review of our manual, uh, board training as it relates to our policies, adding an equity policy, and then also looking at a sustainability and clean energy, um, update add to our set of policies. Um, and lastly, really looking at our monitoring reports and making sure that, uh, as board members, we are adequately monitoring towards our ends. And so, those are our committee reports. Any other adds for committees? Okay, seeing none. Um, next, we will look at our business report, uh, from the superintendent. The Chair recognizes Dr. Bedell to present, um, item two-point-zero-four. The chair recognizes Dr. Bedell to present, um, item two point zero four.
Superintendent's report, okay. At this time, we'll have, uh, Linda Quinley come up, provide that report.
My favorite comfort food, I would dare say, is cheese logs with rich crackers.
Is that the business we're doing today? Cheese logs, okay.
I don't know anything about that. Yeah. And so, so now I have to find where we're supposed to.
So, the Kansas City Public Schools Education Foundation report, I think is first. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, just threw me off, this superintendent's report. So, let me share with our board and the community, we have three items under the superintendent report tonight. Uh, a presentation from our Kansas City, uh, Public Schools Education Foundation. We just want to update you all on where we are, uh, with this organization, and we're very excited about the progress that's being made. We're gonna rearrange, and I'm gonna do the KCPS video highlight after this presentation, and then we will close out the superintendent's report with the Lincoln Expansion presentation. So at this time, I'll pass it over to Nicole, and then you can take over.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell, and thank you, everyone, for allowing us to come present to you today about the, the Education Foundation. Um, it's been a while since we've been in front of you, and I'm excited to say that there's been a lot of growth and new developments during, uh, the eight months since we came to you last. Uh, the first thing I want to draw your attention to is the name change. I think when we came to you last time, we were the Catalyst Fund, which, if you're gonna have an education foundation that truly aligns with your educational initiatives, it should speak to who you are, and it should look like our logo and the brand of the school district. So we are now officially the Kansas City Public Schools Education Foundation. Yay! I love the excitement, thank you, everyone. Um, we also have a new logo, which, um, if you kind of look at it, there are three components to it. On the inside, you see an adult and a child, which can speak to parent, teacher, mentor, and on the outside, you have this blue that kind of encompasses all of that and supports it. The blue is the foundation, the blue is the community. We are here to supplement resources to inspire and, um, to spark that change and that innovation that goes between the mentor and the child, or the parent, or the teacher and the child. So the foundation is here to truly support you, um, to line our initiatives with the strategic plan, and I'm lucky enough to have our Board Chair, Laura Loikano, who is actually going to kind of talk about the strategic plan that we are now going through to make sure we're prepared to go with the district.
Thank you so much. We also like cheese logs.
Yes, we do.
We, uh, uh, as you can see, the Board of Directors, um, we've, we've been working together for several years now and, um, have, uh, recently embarked on, um, uh, a strategic plan, which we wanted to talk to you about, um, a little bit. So, um, if we can have the next slide. Oh, there we go. Okay, who we are. So as Nicole said, one of the, our, um, main objectives is to make sure that our foundation goals are in line with, um, the district goals, and with the educational priorities that you as a board and the superintendent have set. So we wanted to make that crystal clear in the name of our foundation, as well, um, is on our Articles of Incorporation and, um, mission and vision. Uh, we recently received funds to, um, hire an outside consultant to help us develop a strategic plan, and, um, the, the, um, that, um, grant generously helped us, uh, provide infrastructure, so we'll be working with an outside consultant for about eighteen months. This particular consultant, Dr. Elaine Free, um, has come in and met with us several times and is, is helping us work on everything from, um, bylaws to, um, structure of our subcommittees and, um, very specific five-year goals is what we're, um, working on, as well as a five-year budget fundraising goals. One of the things that we, um, enjoy, uh, working with Dr. Free on is that, uh, Free with, is that she has worked with several other education foundations here in the Kansas City metro area, and so this is, um, a step towards our school district, being able to have an education foundation the same as our, um, neighboring school districts with, um, priorities and ability for our, um, grant, grants, um, vendors, employees, and others to be able to donate to our foundation. Our five-year strategic plan, again, aligns with district goals, um, developed criteria and guidelines for, um, dispersing those funds. Uh, you might recall, we were here last spring when we did our first round of classroom grants, we intend to continue that. Uh, we'll be developing with that, um, with the capacity grant, um, marketing materials, communication supports, templates, website, et cetera. Policy and procedure development to ensure that policies provide firm support and smooth operation for the foundation. Funding development to tap into unrealized potential with endowments, planned giving, fundraising and grants, and finally, strategic plans to arrive at the foundation's five-year plan of action, which I mentioned. Probably the most important thing that we've been able to do is hire Nicole, um, as our, uh, person who, um, even just answers the phone, which is very helpful, and maintains that communications with our donors, makes sure donors are acknowledged, is just, you know, the beginning of it, but, um, to really help us professionalize, uh, our, um, our operations. So, uh, here you can just see, that's a lot of words on a page, but you can see that we, um, have, this September, when we've embarked on our strategic plan, um, as I said, we've met several times, we're gonna meet again next week. Uh, they're, they're very, very intensive meetings with our board. Um, I want to mention, we're gonna be adding some additional board members, but we really wanted to get through this strategic plan when we bring on a couple new board members to round out the, the numbers, um, after the first of the year. So, um, right now, we're in the process of, um, doing a couple of things, as you can see on there, from purchasing donor software, which we're able to do, to honoring the commitments that we made through Teacher of the Year, Summer Fest, and Nicole's gonna talk a bit about that, raising the funds that we said we would, and implementation of our plan. Uh, we hope to roll out our website here after the first of the year, um, and, um, really work towards making a bigger splash, but I can't emphasize enough how much we really want to get our ducks in order before we go out and present ourselves to the public. We want to make sure that we have that, um, confidence of our donors and of our civic community and vendors and everyone else that we hope to go to. Um, before I turn it over to Nicole, I do want to say that, um, one of our big plans that I feel very strongly about as chair is that we engage our alums. I think it's really a shame that we've lost, um, a handle on the hundreds, thousands of alums that we have, and we want to, um, not just ask them for money, but to engage them and to be friends and supporters and be, um, proud members of, uh, graduates. And so that's probably one of our first steps. Um, I, my pet project is finding a way to acknowledge and celebrate our alums as, uh, several other districts do. So stay tuned, we hope to engage, um, the community and, um, have some sort of nominating process or something that should be really fun and celebratory. Um, Nicole, would you like to talk about some specifics?
Yeah, so while we are going through this planning process, we have been hitting some highlights, and we have been accomplishing a lot of fun things, honoring a lot of the commitments we talked to you about previously. So first thing, of course, was Summer Fest, which I know a lot of you were at, which was August fifth. Um, the foundation was able to raise over sixty thousand dollars to support Summer Fest. Um, beyond that, we also had a lot of in-kind donations, where the six thousand backpacks, three thousand sets of school supplies, three thousand sets of uniforms, fifteen-plus sponsors came together to help bring that, um, program to life, and we're excited to do it again next year, meeting, the very first meeting for Summer Fest was today, so we're already planning for 2018, um, to make it bigger and better. Uh, another thing we did was Teacher of the Year, that was actually our very first thing, um, as the foundation when I came on, so we were able to award our Teacher of the Year with five thousand dollars, and then both of the runners-up with a thousand-dollar classroom grants, which is exciting. Um, as well, we just got finished with payroll deduction, which is, you know, not everyone's favorite thing, but personally, I love it because it kind of shows the investment that staff are willing to make within their own. Um, so this was our very first time doing payroll deduction, usually the district does unite away, but we've never asked money, um, specifically for the foundation, and I'm excited to say we had over a hundred and fourteen people actually sign up for payroll deduction, that's a hundred percent of cabinet, that's seventy-five percent of principals, and that's twenty thousand dollars pledged, just this year for payroll deductions on our first go-round, which is pretty exciting for us. Um, we weren't sure what the response was going to be, especially because people are still trying to figure out what the foundation is, what do we do, how do we support, uh, the district? And so for them to show that support financially, um, within just, you know, eight months of them hiring me was really exciting. So we're, we're proud to kind of turn that back around, and this spring, we're gonna be issuing our next phase of classroom grants. And while last time we came to you, we gave away five thousand dollars, we're gonna give away twenty thousand dollars in classroom grants this spring, and that's gonna make a huge impact, um, with our teachers, and so we're excited to make those applications open for, uh, our staff this December. So, we understand we don't have all the answers for you today, um, but we want to let you know that we're working, we're planning, like Laura said, we want to make sure we have all of our ducks in a row. We've met with Dr. Shepherd and Dr. Bedell on what the educational initiatives are, so now we know where the education needs are. We're not just gonna be giving out classroom grants and doing Summer Fest, we need to make sure our dollars stretch in the classroom. And so now we can work together in partnership to make that come to life. Um, the last thing I want to say, I did see our treasurer walk through the door, so if anyone in the room feels the spirit of giving, he is here.
There he is.
There he is. He is here to take cash check and charge, so, thank you.
Thank you, Chair, order credit.
There it is. Thank you, Bill. Are there any questions?
Absolutely. Acknowledge Matt Oats is, uh, is our, um, is, uh, one of our, uh, members, non-voting members, as is Dr. Bedell.
Yes, Mr. Evans?
Uh, thanks for the report, uh, both of you. Nicole, how is the Catalyst Fund connected to academic achievement again? I heard you mention it, but could you be a little more specific?
Sure. So, previously, previously the foundation has given classroom grants, and so as the board, we kind of came together and said, you know, we need to go above and beyond that, beyond just short-term progress. And so we actually sat down with Dr. Shepherd and Dr. Bedell, and they gave us a list of things that we need to look at, whether that's K through two literacy, whether that's professional development, college and career readiness. So they gave us cost projections along with some programs that they want to, want for us to fund. So we're working that into our strategic plan, and when we come back to you in the spring, we'll be able to show you how we're actually gonna cost out the next five years academic program to support the students of KCPS.
Okay, Mr., excuse me, Mr. Oats said, I got something. Oh, that we're the Kansas City Public Schools Education Foundation now, not Catalyst Fund. So, yes, very important.
Hopefully you'll see us everywhere next year that that will just roll off your tongue. You won't even know. You're welcome.
I did want to add that, um, again, we're in business to supplement and support the educational priorities of the school district. We went through a very long, drawn-out and, uh, intentional process that we, that, that is our purpose, is to, is our sole purpose as a foundation is to support the school district. And, um, uh, we will probably come up with some innovative things as well, but our primary purpose is to sup- sup- supplement, not supplant, what is being paid for already. And so that's why it's so important that we work with you all and with district staff to understand, um, the, um, the goals and the wish lists, and then also listen to teachers on what they can use at the schools.
Thank you for your report. I would like to offer too, um, Chair Loikano, when you mentioned recognizing alumni, um, really looking at like the Hall of Fame idea that we have, um, talked about before, because, I mean, even tonight, as we heard from alumni and individuals like Judge Bland and others that come before us, it would be great to, you know, have a Hall of Fame to really, um, zero in on the many, uh, people that are, come from quality, that prominent people that come from, um, KCPS system, so thank you for looking into that.
Thank you.
Next presenter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, we will now have our spotlight video. As you all know, each month during our work, our board workshop, uh, our, yeah, workshop, we often provide you, I mean, business meeting, we provide you all with a video highlight of, uh, some significant things that are taking place within our school district, and so we wanted to provide you all with this October video.
My favorite comfort food, I would dare say, is cheese logs with rich crackers. You know, the thing with the little pecans around it, and they sell them typically during the holidays? That's my favorite comfort food.
The fall of 2017 has given Kansas City Public Schools more opportunities to demonstrate the remarkable progress we are making on behalf of students as we celebrated new athletic facilities and showed appreciation for our school leaders. In September, KCPS marked the opening of new athletic fields and facilities at two of our high schools. For the first time in many years, Northeast High School and Central Academy of Excellence's students, staff, families, and neighbors were able to celebrate homecoming parades and games at their home campuses. During the ceremony at the new Northeast Community Sports Complex, KCPS dedicated one of the athletic fields to three fallen Kansas City Fire Department firefighters, Larry Leggio, John Mesh, and Luther Hurd. Central Academy played its first homecoming game on the new Central Park Football Field, with revived Marching Eagles band made its triumphant debut under the direction of Director Osman Fisher. October was National Principals' Recognition Month. This was an opportunity to recognize the remarkable talent and tireless devotion of our school leaders. To mark the occasion, the Communications and Community Engagement Team gathered some fun facts about our principals, like the fact that Whittier Elementary School Principal Luis Henajosa's secret talent is karaoke. We also gave each of them a book, a fleece pullover, and a customized framed Principals' Recognition Month poster. This fall is proving to be a great one for KCPS. We're leveraging community resources for student growth and improvement, and we're developing a network of top-notch leaders. We are truly built for this.
Thank you, and so what I want to share with the community before we move on with our final presentation is that, uh, we do value extracurricular activities for our children. It is a part of our strategic plan, there's a component in there that falls under goal number two, that talks about meeting the needs of the whole child, and part of that is getting our kids to really engage in a social manner with their peers. And so we're excited to share with you that, in comparison to last year, and this is just athletes, so this is not even including some of our new social organizations that we've started this school year, we had seven hundred and one students last year that participated in fall, uh, athletic, uh, programs. This year, that number is up to eight hundred forty-six students, and what that tells you is that we have more students now that have a sense of pride, we've put in these new amenities with our gyms being, uh, repaired, new football fields, soccer fields, those types of things. We want our kids to be well-rounded when they graduate from our school system. In addition, I wanted to, uh, just recognize a couple of individuals in here because I think it's important that everybody really understand that we have some very solid, uh, folks working this school district. Our repurposing team earned, uh, state recognition. That is, uh, KCPS Planning Real Estate Services Director Shannon Jacks and Senior Planner Jesse Lanes. If both of you could please stand real quick, and I believe Nicole was also a part of that at one point, before we moved her. Um, they, they were recognized, uh, for receiving the Outstanding Implementation Award from the Missouri Chapter of the American Planning Association, uh, during a ceremony on October nineteenth at the chapter's two thousand seventeen conference in St. Louis. The award recognizes efforts that demonstrate significant, long-term, and measurable improvements in communities as a result of development planning. And then I want to have our communication team stand up, and I know there's quite a few of you in here because you have to work tonight, Ray in the back, uh, Ray Wykel, Natalie Allen, Justin is in the back, and let me just share with you all that this team, this Office of Communications recently received the following honors as a part of the Missouri School Public Relations Association two thousand seventeen Communications Awards Program. The Golden Achievement Award of Commendation for the two thousand sixteen Summer Fest Event, Marketing Special Purpose Award of Commendation for Dr. Bedell's Post-Entry Plan, and in Video Award of Merit for the office's game-on video. Every year, MOSPR gives its members the opportunity to have their work evaluated by PR professionals and measured against industry standards. Each submission in the program was judged by two PR professionals, both inside and outside of of the public education arena. So I'm extremely proud of these staff members who have just worked with a high level of excellence, compare, I mean, concern and compassion for this school district. And I wanted to publicly acknowledge them in front of all of you today. So we are now ready. I know with many of you are here today to see our presentation on Lincoln Expansion. And we wanted to, at this time, bring up Jesse Lanes. And Linda, I know at one point you would come up to talk about the budgetary implications. But we are ready to move forward with this presentation, so.
Dr. Bedell, can I let the public know how they can submit questions for this presentation? So if you're in the public, you can text any questions during the presentation that we will allow them to answer at the end. That text number is 816-678-7099, 678-7099. So we'll get those questions and ask those at the end. So thank you, Dr. Bedell.
And I do want to share this before Jesse starts. And it's simple, you know, this administration is here to listen and hear out our community. I want everybody to know that ultimately, as the superintendent, it's my responsibility to push forth recommendations to this Board of Education that I believe will serve in the best interest of this school district, not only here in the short term, but in the long term. And so as you go through this presentation, I ask that you do keep that in mind. And then we are wide open in terms of being able to listen to you and hear your observations or your recommendations, or even your concerns. And then we have a week before we ask the board to vote on this on November 1. So we do have time to listen to what you all have to say about this potential initiative of opening up Lincoln Middle. So Jesse.
Good evening. Very excited to tell you about the recommendations for Lincoln Expansion and how that involves the high school and middle school programs. We'll start by looking at a little bit of history to go, to go back a little bit. We're going to go back to 2010 and kind of understand how we got to the place that we are currently at with Lincoln. In 2010, the district went through a rightsizing process because we had way too many school buildings for the number of students. So during that time period, we closed 21 schools, including all of our middle schools. That was largely done as a cost-saving measure. So we just took all of our middle school students and put them into high schools. Most of our high schools became 712. Lincoln became a K-12 school. Soon after we did that, we heard from parents regarding some concerns regarding that grade configuration. And so we started to work through a process where we reopened Northeast Middle and Central Middle in August of 2014. Even back at that time, we heard from Lincoln parents who were wondering when we could reopen Lincoln Middle School. So as such, we created a committee in the fall of 2015. It was a Lincoln Middle Advisory Committee made up of staff members, community members, parents, students, and they explored the idea of reopening Lincoln Middle. At that time, we had a few things that that committee put forth, and really, the work that they did informed the process that we've gone through so far. But a couple of main things that we were looking for with that committee is we wanted to make sure that we had the enrollment to be able to make it feasible, and we also wanted to be able to cover the costs of a startup of a school. So after that, in February of 2016, that recommendation was folded into the master plan, which was approved by the Board of Directors, which specifically mentioned expanding and reopening Lincoln Middle. In September of 2016, we reached 1,022 students, which is 99% building capacity. So the district started working since we started to see those increases in enrollment, far exceeding our projections for the school. Internal staff started working on what Lincoln Expansion could look like. Over the summer, we had a pair of parent meetings. We had a couple Phase 1 meetings in different locations in the district. We also had a Phase 2 meeting held at Lincoln Prep. Between those two meetings, we had about 160 people total participate, which was, which was nice to see. We also sent out a survey to parents and those who were not able to attend. We invited all Lincoln families as well as elementary families throughout the district who might be going to the school. 225 people took that survey. The questions were aligned to the same exact questions that we asked during the public meeting, so it really gave us a nice snapshot of kind of some of the opinions or the recommendations that you'll see this evening. Then this school year, enrollment at the school topped 1,045, meaning 102% building capacity. So we know we have pressing needs at Lincoln. Also, in August of 2017, we adopted our KCPS Strategic Plan, which again reaffirmed exploring expansion of Lincoln by reopening the middle school. And so this school year, Lincoln is the only KCPS school at or above capacity currently. So we talk about why do we want to talk about exploring expansion? It's funny when we pose this question to anybody outside of Lincoln, I mean, we talk for a long time, but if you talk to anybody who's in Lincoln every day, like staff and students, they kind of readily understand why we're exploring expansion, and it has to do with space. Again, the capacity of the building is about 1,025. That's a program capacity, how many we'd like to see in that, in that building. Currently, we're at 1045. So you can see the breakdown there between the middle school students and our high school enrollment, which is for the first time over that 700 number. And so it's created a lot of issues within the building. Throughout this process, we've had opportunities to engage with students. They attended the Phase 1 and Phase 2 meetings, which was great because anytime the students started talking, that was great input that everybody listened to, and they had firsthand experience of the building. We recently met again with the Student Council. They talked about crowded hallways, crowded classes. You can see in the picture there, one of the young ladies doesn't have a desk to sit in, so she's sitting in a chair next to a table. So they cited a lot of issues that they're having at the school that's created because of the lack of space. There are other reasons, though, why we would explore expansion, and part of that has to do with demand for Lincoln. So this school year, we still have a waiting list at the school, particularly in the middle school grades. We see it at 7th grade, and there's also a few at 9th grade. The waiting list has fluctuated at different times of the year, anywhere from 30 to 70 students as we've prepared for this school year. Beyond that, there are students that aren't even being captured in our waitlist numbers because we have closed enrollment at the school. We're not accepting any more students. So when parents come in to the school to find out more information, or they call, they find that out, they don't even go through the application process. So they're not even being captured as far as being captured on that waitlist, but we know that there is continued interest because of those coming to the school. We also have school tours that have been scheduled for this school year. They are currently already maxed out. We have 100 students so far that are interested in touring Lincoln. Another reason we want to enhance the middle school and high school programming, one other thing that we found when we talked to students is those who are in high school, who had been there from middle school, really saw the need to focus on middle school needs. They felt like in many ways, they were kind of just kind of out of place being put into a high school. So they felt that the middle school would offer that opportunity and allow the district to focus on those two separate levels, as well as the separation of middle and high school students. That's something that we typically heard from parents. There was concerns about having, you know, younger students in the same building with older students as well. Interestingly, among the kids and the students in there, high school students were able to reflect upon their own personal experience, and they were saying, you know, for what middle school is supposed to be, is it supposed to be a time of kind of transition and kind of getting you ready for what you're going to do in high school? And many of them expressed, coming out of 5th grade and being put into the high school, it's like you're kind of thrown into a high school environment right away, which one of them said is a little scary, you know, at some point. So that's just one issue why we'd continue to explore expansion. We also want to increase access to a top program. Recently, again, Lincoln was recognized as one of the top high schools in the state of Missouri, so we'd like to increase access and seats that are available. And also, that last bullet's important as well. We want to attract and retain school-aged children within our community. That's a piece of a puzzle that we need to solve, and Lincoln is one part of that. There's lots of things that are going to help us to do that, but that's something that we need to be definitely aware of because we see it happening and really affecting our middle school grades across the district. This infographic just shows, we looked at it last year, looking at 7th graders. When you look at that class last year, we'd lost one out of every two since kindergarten. So again, by the time they're matriculating through the district, especially when they get towards the middle school years, we see them leaving the school district. The same thing was true when we looked at 12th graders. We've lost two out of every five students since 5th grade. So just another reason why this is going to be on our radar, and it's something that we need to be aware of. When we look at how the enrollment is broken down between charters and KCPS, it's very interesting. So you see in the elementary grades, the K-5 there, charter schools and KCPS, KCPS has the majority of the students. When we look at grades 6 through 8, that swaps. We have, the majority of students are enrolled in charter schools, and then with KCPS having the majority again in high school. So just looking strictly at enrollment numbers, we can see that this is an issue that needs attention because of those leaving the district after 4th grade and going for other options. So KCPS strategy for middle school, there's going to have to be a lot of different things that help us to address this issue. One of those has to do with improving our current middle schools. So we have targeted efforts to revitalize our neighborhood middle schools, which we will be sharing in just a few moments, different things that are being put into place this school year, we're planning, as well as for the budget for next school year, and some of those additional resources that are going to be made available for those schools based upon their needs because we know that we need to improve education at that level. Another piece of this is we believe expanding the Lincoln program that will add more available seats, especially at the middle school grades. This helps those who wish to stay in our district can for that, if they would like that option. And also, we are continuing the exploration of a third middle school to serve students living in the southern portion of the district, south of Brush Creek. Again, that was a recommendation that, to continue exploration of that, which was in the master plan, and then reaffirmed again in the strategic plan, which was approved in August of this year. So our specific recommendations for Lincoln, we recommend reopening the middle school for the 2019 and 2020 school year. The reason why it's pushed off a little bit is because when we look at successful school models, it takes considerable time when you talk about construction renovation that needs to happen in the building, but also having the right people on board to make sure the school has the right academic components, we have the right people in place to make sure that it's successful. This model is also similar to what we did when we reopened Central Middle and Northeast Middle. We had that same time period where we had that planning year before it began to really make sure that that's in place. When the schools are fully up and running, so at the end of like a five-year period, the school sizes we'd like to see is a 1,000-seat high school, so a little bit less than what we have now, and then the 550-seat middle school. The grade configuration would be similar to what we have with a 6 through 8 in the middle school program and 9 through 12 within the high school building. We look at other things for Lincoln. We're talking about modifying entrance requirements for the middle school. The entrance requirements for the high school will remain in place and not change, and we'll even talk about the middle school entrance requirements a little bit as well, how that would be a little bit different. The GPA requirement would stay exactly the same for the middle school and the high school, which would have that 2.5 GPA. And there would be an automatic roll-up for 8th grade students who maintain that GPA and the other requirements, just like now 8th graders roll into 9th grade like any other year. That would still remain in place. 8th graders would roll from the middle school to the high school. When we look specifically at the middle school entrance requirements currently, you can see what we have in place. Students must have a record of good citizenship, cumulative GPA of 2.5 or higher, and they must score at or above the 60th percentile on standardized testing and reading and math. What we want to do is look at that last testing requirement, where students must score at or above the 60th percentile. We want to keep that in place, but also have an opportunity, if students don't hit that mark of being over the 60/60, they could enter on a probationary basis if they score at or above a cumulative percentile of 130 on a national standardized assessment in math and reading. However, neither score can be below the 55th percentile. So the reason we do that is because we've heard that there are students who are very close to that range, but not quite over the 60/60. So an example of that, we could have a student who excels in one specific area. Maybe they're just a rock star in reading, they're in the 91st percentile, but in math, they're maybe at the 58th. So under this scenario, their cumulative percentile of 149 would qualify them for entrance. And then we know if they're accepted, they would receive that targeted support in the one area where they might be a little bit lacking to reach the rigor of an IB program, and then to go on to have success at the high school to have the goal of receiving an IB diploma. With this option to enter on a probationary basis with this cumulative percentile of 130, we would limit the number of probationary seats of students below 60/60 to no more than 5% of the total middle school enrollment. So when we talk about this and we look at these numbers, it's interesting because even the kids that we're talking about, this is a very small group of students. What the district is doing is it's being responsive to what we have heard from community members, especially with parents who have kids that are not in the school, who are looking to go. We feel it's the right thing to do, especially for the students who are excelling in one area and might just be missing the cutoff in another. And you talk to educators and different ones in the building, you know, you're predicting future success of a child, maybe one's at a 91 and 58, and the other one's at a 60/60. I think the one at 91 and 58 can definitely excel in the Lincoln program and be able to reach that rigor of the IB school. So we look at the current enrollment at Lincoln. This slide's really interesting, and it illustrates why we are making the recommendations that we are. So the chart there at the top shows our enrollment in 2016. We're at 952, currently at 1045. So we grew by about 100 students in the last two years. We will mention that we have not done any targeted marketing for Lincoln. That is growth that has happened on its own over the last two years, and you can see how the schools have increased. We look at the chart there in the bottom right. It's more interesting to go back to 2015. So we look back, going back three years, the school has increased by over 200 students. So at the time when that Lincoln Middle Advisory Committee was going through our recommendations of different things, one of those being, can we get more kids? Since that time period, we've increased by 200 students already at the school. Something also that's very interesting, if you look at the 9th grade line, we grew from 157 to 220. We see our largest increase that's coming into the school is our incoming 9th graders. That's wonderful to see for the Lincoln Prep program. However, that does have an impact as well, and you can see it in our middle school numbers. So as the high school has grown, the middle school has essentially stayed the same or gone down a little bit. That middle school number this year could be higher. We know we have students who are currently on a waitlist for the middle school, but there isn't space in the building. So that middle school is being kept small, and opportunities are being limited. We know that right now, when we look at the 9th grade number of 220, Lincoln typically keeps students. We have a high retention rate at the school. So we expect that 220 number to continue as they matriculate through the system and they become 10th graders the next year, 11th graders, and so on. So as those numbers continue to go up at the high school, we're going to have less and less opportunities at the middle school. And most of our middle school students are KCPS students coming out of KCPS schools. So we'd be limiting the opportunities at Lincoln for current KCPS students. We look at projected enrollment. So this is taking us through 2019 to 2023. We can anticipate adding nearly 500 seats to the Lincoln program. This is the breakdown between the middle school and the high school, 217 for the middle school, 265 for the high school. When we shared these recommendations, they are rather conservative. We wanted to make sure that it was something that was attainable and stretched out over a five-year time period. Also, it's interesting to look at the grade level numbers specifically. So you'll notice there's a big difference between our 6th grade numbers and our 7th grade numbers. We have a much larger 7th grade. Of course, that is intentional because of the current system that we have in KCPS, our elementary schools are K-6. So we want students who qualify for Lincoln, and they want to come to Lincoln, but they want to finish their academic career at their elementary school, they can continue at K-6, and we still have spots available at 7th grade. That's also true if you look at 9th grade. We want to have the opportunity for 8th graders to roll up from the middle school into the high school, but at the same time, we want to allow space for other students to come in at 9th grade because we know that that's a typical year that students do. We have students that come in from 9th grade from the other middle schools, Central, Northeast. We have students that come in from FLA or other areas in the district as well. So that's why those numbers are larger in the 9th grade specifically and the 7th grade because that's when we're gaining those students in those cohorts. One question that we've heard several times is how will this impact enrollment at other district schools? So there's a couple of ways that we have looked at that. What we did is we went back and we looked at, you know, if we made any changes to allowing... you know, if we made any changes to allowing in students on a probationary period, what that would look like, but also past trends. So we saw how many students qualified for Lincoln under testing requirements and GPA, and then how many of those students who qualified decided to come. There's lots of students who qualify for Lincoln that decide not to attend Lincoln. We have plenty of high achievers at other schools within our district to attend neighborhood middle schools. And so what we did is we looked at what the potential increase would be based on historical data of students who chose to attend that also qualified to attend the school. So then we broke down where would the students come from, doing a projected estimate. That's of at the end of the 2022-23 school year, so the increase of almost 500 students, the percentages of where those students could come from, from different areas, whether it be the elimination of the waitlist, improved retention, or expanded marketing of the school. So now I'm going to invite up Ms. Linda Quinley, who's going to go through some of the impacts of the financial and facility components.
Good evening. The heavy lifting on this is certainly the program and curriculum areas, but we would be remiss to not share with the board and the community what the fiscal obligation and commitments are in this consideration. The first piece being considering what we would do with our building and design. Immediately, if the board later in the coming weeks authorizes this, we would form a team, a committee, that is specifically tasked with creating the needs of the building and looking through the architect's early recommendations and coming up with what those priorities are. Those, that team would be made up of stakeholders, including communities, students, educators, and all who have a voice. The types of things that we know we would be looking at based on the preliminary design include your traditional and typical exterior projects, including tuck-pointing roofing. We want to get our buildings tight and make sure that when we do work on the inside, that it's been done after good work's been done on the outside. Looking at our grounds and fields, typical interior renovations to make our classrooms attractive and effective and useful for today's education. And then our auditoriums and gymnasium also need a significant look there. Everything from flooring, sound and lighting, to scoreboards and seating. And of course, at the end of any good project, you have to furnish and provide the technology for the learning inside. Our early estimates, after conversation with our architect, are that the budget would be roughly $16.3 million, including some work at Lincoln High School field and track. So we're looking at this in a bit of a bundle because that is an efficiency standard for us, and we have some shared facilities. Both buildings use, share the fields and track. So you can see roughly $15 million as a maximum on the property at Lincoln Middle and then another $1.4 million at Lincoln High. Again, we'd be looking for a $16 million maximum budget. Our job would be to value engineer that design after the committee's done their work to do it as efficiently as we can. The funding sources for this building improvement would be from three possible areas. As we close out existing projects, if we are able to accumulate some unspent dollars from the current certificates of participation that are on the books, we would apply those dollars first to the project. We have recently, with the help of the grants department, submitted an NFL grant for $250,000. It does require a match. And so if the board proceeds with this project, then that grant is hopeful to be approved and awarded. And then the final piece would be that the balance would need to be transferred from the operating fund as a one-time capital investment. Our goal in all of that would be to end up with a project that looks very similar to what Central Middle and Northeast Middle enjoy today, having recently gone through their renovations. We've provided for you just some numbers on what the Board of Education invested in those facilities and then put an inflationary factor on them. So you can really see we are looking at very comparable projects. And then for additional information, we've given you at the bottom of the page there what the field projects at those cost as well, so that you can see we really are talking about nearly the same investment at Lincoln Middle as the board made at Central and Northeast a few years ago. Then on the operating side, what we want to show you are the additions to an operating budget. Should Lincoln Middle move to its own facility and expand to be able to support more students? This is a perspective that is different than when you open a new middle school building or a new building of any time, any kind. It's, there's an actual fiscal advantage to doing this kind of an opening where you really are moving an entire staff with an entire existing student body and then adding to it. It's more efficient than traditional opening. So what you see here are the additions that would be needed. We currently have some shared duties, such as the principal and the leadership and guidance counselors that would have to be separated out and have to be staffed. Interestingly, one of the largest line of additions is maintenance and custodial. Because we currently don't have maintenance and custodial at Lincoln Middle School. And so it's the largest number of staff. So in the end, we're just over 21 FTE for $1.5 million in order to make the transition. On the right side, you see operating budget needs outside of staffing. You'll see some asterisks that indicate we do need some first-year dollars to do one-time things, such as furnishings into the building that are non-capital and then department startup budgets. If I move a science department, they're going to need beakers and things in both buildings. And so we're going to have to accommodate that. The ongoing budget for this expansion is estimated at just under $1.9 million. Then when that happens, and as we grow the student count at Lincoln High School, we again have some additions, just over eight FTE in order to support a growing student population. And I dare say, support what Lincoln might tell you today, the areas that they're understaffed in based on the fact that they have combined programs. Dr. Shepherd has been busy since she arrived, and she sometimes blows back the hair of Ms. Thompson and myself when we talk about what it takes to really support the educational needs of our students across the system. But as she refers to her middle school revitalization program, the timing is right to do all of this at once. And she's really pushing us, and we will be considering in the operating budget next year some additions specifically inside the program of middle school to support those student needs. Again, at all middle schools. So these are recommendations for increases for both Central Middle and Northeast Middle. Collectively, they add up to 25 FTE and just over $2 million. And you see, as you look down the list, things like math and reading intervention, social work and family support, behavior support intervention, co-teaching, where we need more support inside our certain classrooms. So these are intentional targeted efforts from curriculum and instruction to improve what's happening inside all of our buildings. Again, 25 FTE and $2.1 million for those other two middle schools. We wanted to share some data with you on what does this mean? So as we look out several years and we assume these additions are made, you see student staffing ratios here that represent where we are by building, Lincoln Central, Northeast. And then you've got a comparison to the Missouri standards to show that we really are focusing, Dr. Shepherd in particular, as she looks at what our buildings need, on maintaining equity and also maintaining the greatest need where the greatest need is. So you'll see variances because she's determined that a building may need something more than another based on their student population. Down at the very bottom, you can see there are estimated annual staffing budgets and the number of students that are in those projected enrollment figures for that year that I pulled out for you to look at. So in the end, all of these things do generate and create some additional operating budget needs. It's just over $4.6 million to expand Lincoln Middle, provide additional supports and services at both Central and Northeast Middle, and allow for growth in student population and staffing needed for that at Lincoln Prep High. So $4.6 million in total ongoing. How do we pay for that? That's always an important question. At 482 additional ADA between both the high school and the middle school model, we generate just over $2.6 million of funding through both the Foundation Formula and Proposition C revenues that would come to us from the state. So we're able to fund 57% of the need through that source. The balance, like every other initiative we generate or create, has to come from our local property tax revenues and our other local revenues. So it then becomes incumbent upon both growth in assessed valuation, as we recently talked about at our tax levy hearing, and redirection intentionally by the administration when they bring you board budget recommendations each year in order to fund those. And then you can see at the bottom, we have a one-time opportunity or access to just under $1.6 million for grant funding that would be parsed out over three years to support the startup efforts of Lincoln Middle School. So Jesse started with where we've been. We'll end with where we go from here, provided that we are able to have a positive action at November 1st meeting on both the approval of the project and the architectural services contract. We'll immediately get busy in both that design effort and the planning for hiring and staffing and issuing of RFPs and bids for contractors to start the work with an end game or goal of that in the summer of '19, we'd complete the building. We'd have our celebrations and our tours and our ribbon cuttings, and then we'd start school in August of 2019.
We're going to go with a round of questions. Anyone have questions? All right, we'll start with Mr. Evans.
I remember Mrs. Jack gave a report on some surrounding property. And I don't think it was around Lincoln Middle. But I was wondering, do you have to acquire an additional property or is it a self-sustaining site? If so, would it be, would that affect the budget?
I'll start with the later question because it's easier. No, it won't affect the budget, we don't believe. We do need a little bit of extra land to meet the desires of how a track would lay out. But it appears that it's probably doable with little or no funding.
Board member Morris?
Thank you. Kind of early for me to ask my questions, but when's the latest that we backfill? Looking at the chart you gave on projected enrollment, I see it looked like a mathematical discrepancy to me, but I want some clarification on the latest a student can enroll in Lincoln.
Lincoln doesn't have a requirement for, you know, you can't come into the school at a certain time. We have students coming in currently at all grade levels. We also have, like we said, we have a high retention at Lincoln, but we don't have 100%. We have students who leave the school as well. So during the course of a school year, we can have students come in or they can come in at different grade levels depending upon how old they are.
Okay, thank you.
Board member Mansour?
So one of my questions is about staffing, and I've looked at what you're showing in terms of staffing needs. I feel like from my own experience of having a history of having kids at Lincoln, there was a lot of capacity to utilize your teachers across all grades. So we, in many ways, we had a lot of difficulties with having all the students in one building. We also were able to maximize the evaluation of so staff were teaching at the high school level. They also had class preps at the middle school level. So you can, so I, one of the questions I'm really having is say that there's in fact not
Sure, the data that we used to determine how staffing would grow was actually extracted out of core data, our October file from last year, because that gives us the best information on what our teachers are doing in the building. And so interestingly to me, I expected to see very much of what you just described, not knowing what I might see. But interestingly, what I saw was that we are fairly well in a pattern of the sixth-grade teachers, seventh-grade teachers, eighth-grade teachers, or math, middle, math, high. And so I found one teacher in all of that that was split between middle and high school. And they were teaching, I can't quote off the top of my head, but two sections in one of those two areas and the rest of their sections were in the other. So you're right, there's not a lot of pressure. It's a fairly easy divide based on how we were using our teachers in our last core data reporting.
But this is a follow-up on the staffing. I think the other question I would have is when you create, when you take a middle school and you open it, you have your needs around, say, for example, foreign language. And so this is, I think, always been a challenge within the district to really grow and maintain an adequate pool of highly qualified foreign language teachers. And so are you looking at, maybe this is a question for Dr. Shepherd, I'm not sure, but are you examining the areas where you're really going to have to be very aggressive and proactive and seeking out the kind of expertise you're going to need to in some of those areas that are not as easy to hire for?
Yes, interestingly enough, we had a meeting yesterday with our HR department to begin looking at the HR hiring cycle. We realized that we do have some courses that it is difficult to hire. We call those hard-to-hire areas. And so we are looking at now starting that process a lot earlier so that we can make sure that all of those spots are filled. We know particularly those would be in the area of math, science, and foreign language. And so we know that all three of those would be affected by the Lincoln Middle School expansion. And so it would be the HR position to go ahead and begin looking for those along the same lines of the cycle that they have created that will actually start months earlier than we have in the past.
And now, just let me just respond to that, too. Last year, when we took a totally different approach to how we were going to recruit last year. And as a result of our model that we put in place last year, we were able to offer roughly 50 early contracts. And I want to say that probably 48 of those were Yeah, just because we're building on that this year, what Dr. Shepherd just shared.
We had about a little over 40 that returned letters of intent. And that was just after our job fair that we have in February. And then approximately 20-some of those people were actually hired on with us. And so we got quite a few applicants from that initial KCPS job fair. But to also answer the question, we are starting earlier this year, and we're also offering earlier contracts. But to also answer the question, we are starting earlier this year and we're also offering earlier contracts. And so we will be very proactive about looking for people to fill some of those hard-to-fill positions. We're already meeting with universities once again and then looking at even hiring on some of those December grads. Getting them in earlier and not waiting until the fall to have them start with us, but to have them start with us in December.
Thank you. Board member Hartsfield?
Yes, I had a question and trying to understand on the enrollment piece. And so I wanted to get some clarity. One of the things I wanted to understand the flow, for example, if we're looking at some of our signature schools, such as our two Montessori schools, they're K through six, correct? So their children start flowing in at seven. When we look at FLA, they would start flowing in at eight, I mean nine, correct? And then when you look at your charters, they start flowing in at nine. Okay, so I can understand that when I look at your sixth grade being your lowest and then the jump in your seventh, because you have your others coming in. But then when I start going diagonally, starting in 2016, from sixth, seventh to eighth, I see your increase. When I go from seventh, eighth to ninth, I see your increase. When I go to eighth, ninth, and tenth, I see your increase. I'm trying to look at cohorts, how they're moving. But when I get to tenth, eleventh, and twelfth, I start seeing this decrease. What is your understanding about that?
You're saying on our current enrollment?
Yeah, I was doing this 2016 through 2018. So for example, if I start looking at 10th grade to 11th grade to 12th grade, I'm looking at 158, 155, 144. If I start looking, it starts at the ninth grade, you do a little jump and then a decrease. Do you, do you have any thoughts about that? I was just wondering.
Well, with our current enrollment, it's something that we see across the system, you know, as we matriculate into the higher grades. But particularly for Lincoln, while it has a high retention rate, it's not at 100%. So we know that children do leave the school for other options sometimes as they, as they get older and they matriculate through the system. So that could be one reason why as they get older through the grades, that cohort shrinks, which is typically what happens. We look at when kids are coming to the school. Most of the students coming into Lincoln come sixth through 10. We don't have as many new students coming in in those upper grades, so that's why the enrollment would be lower there.
Can you clarify, there was a little bit of confusion regarding the modified standards. And I know that some things have changed based on new information that we've received. So can you be really clear about what this proposal calls for as it relates to entrance standards for the middle school?
Yes. So currently, what we have in place is that the requirements of good citizenship, the 2.5 GPA and the 60-60 on the national standardized testing. So for the high school, again, nothing would be changing with those. There's also a foreign language requirement for the high school as well. But for the middle school, we're looking at that testing requirement. So we want to keep that in place of the 60-60, but have an option for students who are right on the edge to still be able to enroll if they have that cumulative 130. And they would be enrolled on a probationary basis.
That will only be up to 5%?
Right, up to 5% of the total middle school. So the school does probation currently with students who are in the low end of the 60-60. And they have students come in, they have to do a contract between the student and the parent. And there's certain things that the student has to abide by. You know, obviously, it's a GPA requirement, but also it might be a specific class. Maybe they need to get an A and B, A or B in English. Then they also have certain requirements for a parent. Maybe the parent has to contact the teacher three times a semester or something. So it'd be putting those things in place for students who are right at that cusp. So they still wouldn't be able to be under a 55, but we would look for at least a cumulative total of 130 to be able to have that probationary status.
So essentially, the standards would be the same for the high school and the middle school, aside from a 5% probationary entrance of a, up to 5%, so not
Maximum.
Max, maximum, okay. Thank you. Board member Oats?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to just say or acknowledge the administration on providing the info on how we were going to enhance the other middle school programs to be sure that those students as well were getting access to a quality education and able to possibly also enter Lincoln High School ready to roll right there. I know that was something that I and some other board members had expressed a little bit of concern about. I think you guys did a good job of seeking to address that. That was my first comment. My second comes a little bit longer and it's centered around the admission requirement. And so I just want to first off say, I'm not going to let perfect get in the way of good. So I understand that I might not like everything about the plan, but in general, I'm pretty supportive of the plan. I understand the value of density in high school. And, you know, I think when we reopen the middle schools, it was under the idea that middle schoolers need an environment that's conducive to them because that's a very transitional age for children. But the, I guess I have a problem with the idea of the hard 60-60 requirement, just overall, just as a principle. I don't think that having a composite scoring method will any, in any way, shape or form dilute the rigor of the school or is predictive of the talent of prospective KCPS kids. You see all, you see all across the country now, more and more of the top universities in this country are looking at more holistic admission approaches, not just setting a hard score, whether it's on the ACT. Because they all recognize it's just a snapshot in time. And what we're doing, I guess my problem is what we're doing here is we're judging a kid's ability from sixth through 12th off a snapshot of when they're 10 years old, right? So we're saying, hey, they take a test in fifth grade and if they don't hit 60-60, you know, good luck to you. One thing that looking forward, I would want us to look at taking that more holistic approach. I'm fine with the plan as it is, but I would really like us to look at that maybe sometime in the future. Because sometimes, you know, you didn't get that 60 because it was a bad day, or you just weren't presented a concept. You know, with this district having, what, a quarter of the district now is qualified as English language learners? So they might be, you know, getting up to proficiency in English, but in math, they're rock stars. So we want to be sure that, you know, when we're talking about access to education, that we're doing it in a way that, you know, looks to bring that kid in. Because whether a kid comes in with 60-60 or 90-150, both plans all say that that kid will have to show and prove, right? Like everybody has to come to Lincoln, you have to show and prove. You have to get that 2.5 GPA requirement. And I would, I would submit that it's the 2.5 GPA requirement that makes Lincoln Lincoln and not the 60-60. Yeah, I, like I said, I'm not going to stay in the way of that part, but it is just something I want us to want us and I want community members to think about when we're talking about access to high-quality education and making that a snapshot at age, so.
Board member Mansur?
I just have a couple of quick comments, then I do have a question here. I want to echo what my colleague Matt Oats says. I, I am, I'm feeling good that we have followed through on our commitment to the community made through the master plan to invest in our facilities. There are substantial changes and improvements in our facilities. And I feel very proud of this district that I feel that there's been, we have delivered on some of that, even though we know we have a lot of work yet to do. So thank you, Dr. Bedell, for helping us because you weren't part of that master plan, but you've certainly honored the work that we've done in that master plan process. I think that the data that the administrative team has shared, we see a slight uptick in enrollment and we are feeling very good about that. But the data is also, you have shown us that we have been losing students at middle school and that that's obviously an area of concern. And so part of the investment in middle school is to figure out, what does it take to engage students, to keep them with us, to meet their needs, satisfy parent concern? I do believe we are taking actions that are getting us in that place. So here is my question then. As we continue to invest in middle school fairly substantially out of our budget, Dr. Bedell, it wasn't mentioned in this specific presentation tonight, but in some of the information you've shared with the board, you have referenced your sort of the administration's position that middle school is six, seven, and eight. And I just want to kind of ask you to speak about that because I know some districts call middle school seven and eight. You know, some six, seven, and eight. And I think we early on had some questions about where we're going to align our middle schools around a seven, eight model or six, seven, eight? So can anyone speak about that?
Yeah, I can definitely speak about that. I can tell you my personal position is that middle school should be six, seven, and eight. That is the experience, that is that phase when students are kind of trying to find their way into this world. And I think that it makes it a lot more manageable for our elementary schools because now when you think about the high-stakes accountability that I think oftentimes a one-day snapshot, you know, really dictates and becomes a predictor for what happens to kids. If we're educating kids in K through five or pre-K through five, then, you know, efforts can then be really focused on getting our K through two up to standards while focusing on your third and fourth and fifth graders and not having to worry about sixth grade. I think sixth grade needs to be in the middle school where they're a little bit older. So you don't have sixth graders in a building with pre-K or elementary students. And they're amongst their peers in grade six, seven, and eight. I think it enriches the experience, not only from an academic position, but also from a social and emotional position. You now are able to field more competitive academic competition teams. You're able to field more competitive athletic teams because now you have more to draw from in grade six, seven, and eight. And ultimately, it gives us a real middle school experience. The truth is, and the reason why, you know, I'm asking that we move forward with eventually approving this next week is because it begins to help us with our middle school revitalization. We're going to have to have a strong conversation about, does it make sense to keep kids in schools where they go all the way through the sixth grade and they get a singular experience? They don't get a middle school experience. They don't get to rotate from class to class. They're in a self-contained class as sixth graders. And I just think as a superintendent, the model, if we want to have a true middle school experience, then we have to think about sixth through eight across the board and what that looks like and understanding like in FLA, you may not be able to touch that because of the way the curriculum is designed. But I think our other schools, we have to take a strong look at that middle school model. And that's a big area of focus that we're looking at right now. So I can't sit here and say, Ms. Mansur, Mansur, that it's going to be six, seven, and eight. Think that's going to require a lot of dialogue with our team, with the community, with the board on what makes the most sense for our school district. But our kids do deserve to have a real middle school experience that they're not allotted right now.
Dr. Bedell, quick follow-up then on the middle school question as well. Thank you for answering that. You know, within the master plan, it was, it was always written in there and contemplated the possibility of reopening Lincoln Middle. And that was, it was not fully stated, but it was contemplated now based on the demand and other identified opportunities you've brought, you're bringing a proposal forward to the board. It was also, it was also contemplated in the master plan that in, as we're developing strong and healthy and vibrant feeder patterns, that we recognize that we had an absence of a middle school serving families in the South Zone. And I know that there's some, that the administration has identified some action items that you want to undertake regarding that aspect, that that missing element in the South Zone. And could someone talk about that for a moment?
Sure, I, and I'll let you chime in Jesse in a few minutes. But it is our full intention and that we continue to explore that opportunity. We do have facilities south of Brush Creek. We have engaged the community and I can tell you that going through those focus groups, there was concern about the ability to be able to actually have enough students to begin to open a South Middle School. What I can tell you as we think about our enrollment trends and one of the things we looked at today was, I think our numbers now are roughly 330 kids above what was projected. So that's a great sign that enrollment is really becoming more stabilized. And we're not hitting these declines that we've hit over the past several years with students not enrolling. What I can share with you is that a lot of those schools, those elementary schools south of Brush Creek, those are schools that we're going to have to monitor. I mean, I look at Abanaker, they're sitting at 101 or 102 kids above what they were projected. Hartman is four. Hellcook is four. And so there are opportunities when we look at our trends this year, and even with Truce, I think they're about 50 or 60 kids above what they were projected. We have elementary schools where the demand and the return of students wanting to attend those schools is beginning to uptick. And that's the reason why we believe that that conversation with a middle school south of Brush Creek is still critical. We just need to monitor those numbers. And the key is, let's keep the kids that we have. Let's not give them a reason to leave and go anywhere else. And I think with the supports and the plan that we're putting in from an academic standpoint, we are going to be able to do that and educate these kids so that when they do matriculate to this middle school that we eventually are looking to open, we will be able to do that. Any additional input, Jesse?
No, I think that I agree with all that. I, I think that it's, I think it's nice to recognize the work that that group has done, the South Middle School Steering Committee. Because when I look back at the work that the Lincoln Middle Advisory Committee did, you know, two years ago, and they laid out, you know, very articulately the things that we had to achieve and things that would have to happen before we would move forward with this. The South Middle School Group has done the same thing. You know, they've outlined several steps. And like Dr. Bedell spoke about, some of those would be monitoring enrollment and different things. But they've kind of laid that out. So it gives us a nice time period over the next year of how we're going to be investigating those things. And one of those pieces of a recommendation would even, that that group made was having Lincoln Middle as kind of an interim step, you know, expanding that, that middle school. So that's even a piece of what that group has done. And there's several things that we have to continue looking at and monitoring to see about the creation of a third middle school.
Dr. Shepherd, I do have a question that you could potentially answer. I think it's on page 18 in the slides regarding the middle school revitalization. And then also one of the individuals who gave some comments earlier today about meeting basic needs. And so when parents, so you, you have some additional staffing resources for Central, Middle, and Northeast that speaks to equity and putting investments in where they're needed across the system. And so can you kind of speak more life into this slide? If you were talking to a parent that went to either of these middle schools of how things are going to be different based on these investments? And then duly, to the parent who feels that we're not meeting their basic needs at this point, and we're talking about expansion, what would you say to that parent to have confidence that we're building this as a both-and conversation?
Yes, when we look at the needs of our other two middle schools, Central Middle School and Northeast Middle School, each of them have different needs and equity is about providing students with what they need. There's not a formula, but there is addressing the needs. And so when we look at what we've done here with the middle school revitalization, we've gone through and we've looked at what each school needs. When we look at the schools in the Northeast, we tend to have more students that are English language learners. And so that means that we need to provide more supports there. We'd like to see more of our kids exit ESL. And, and so part of what we have here, when we say instructional specialists and co-teacher and some of the things that we've put on here, that is to address their unique needs. Now, when we think about Central, Central has a totally different demographic. And so when we look at equity and equity-based formula here for Central, Central is going to be a little different. And I think we want to move to slide 16 actually, because that kind of shows a little bit better what it is that so we look at here, you see an ELL teacher, okay? That's an additional ELL teacher. When you see intervention and social work, we know that we have great needs at both of those schools. And so part of the reason, based on all of the feedback that we've gotten from parents, the feedback that we've gotten from teachers, the feedback that we've gotten from the union, that we need to provide some additional staff there to meet the social and emotional needs of the students. And so when you look at our middle school revitalization, it really is a plan that provides the additional needs, the things that the schools cannot now fill. And so when, when we took our, all of our tier, all of our group three principals out and we wanted to hear from them, what is it that you need in order to move the needle? In a lot of cases, they told us, we need socio-emotional support, we need interventionist because we have so many children that come that are below grade level in reading or below grade level in math. So we listened to those things. So we took feedback from a variety of stakeholders. And we took that feedback and we created this model. This was not a model that we did in isolation because we wanted to make sure that we addressed the needs of the kids that they currently have. And so we've looked at this, not just at the middle school level, but we looked at it at the elementary. We have a special ed program evaluation going right now and it should be done within the next week. And that program evaluation will detail some of the things that we need to do in order to provide more equity across the board for our special education students, in addition, our English language learner students. So all of those things will help us to make the decisions that we need to make in order to provide equity for all three of these middle schools.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? I think that there is a question that's coming from the queue. There goes Natalie.
One question did Would some of your staff, I think they kind of, this doesn't really make, would some of your staff, could they come from elementary if we went K through five? So I'm not sure how to interpret that question, but
I think what they're saying is, sixth grade teachers, would they have an opportunity to apply for a position at the middle school? Or when we move those sixth grade classes, yeah, the answer is yes.
Thank you. Alright, any other questions from my colleagues? Thank you, Dr. Bedell, for
Just one final remark, and this has nothing to do with, well, yeah, it does. Yeah, so I think I've stated my position on why I think it's very important that we get this approved. And so I'm most certainly hoping that as we go through this next week, we'll have an opportunity to continue to field any additional questions from the board, even from the community. And we will make our recommendation if there's any adjustments And we will make our recommendation, if there's any adjustments prior to that November 1st meeting, we will be able to make a sound decision on what we are asking the board to approve here in terms of the opening of Lincoln Middle School. And then one last thing, we have some really good news that we want to share with you. I shared with you earlier about our extracurriculars. And East High School right now is a building that's about at 92% capacity. They're sitting with about 1,150 plus students. And we're just proud of them right now, because they won their district soccer game tonight, three to one. They beat a team. They beat a team that had a record 24 wins. They will play Tuesday quarterfinals at the IL Stadium. And if they win that, then they will go to the States. Say that. This is outstanding news. Thank you, Dr. Sanders.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Now for our consent agenda. This will be a roll call vote. We will, is there a motion to approve our consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve our consent.